The meeting will please come to order. Good evening, everyone. My name is Trippi Congo, President of Wilmington City Council. And on behalf of all my colleagues, we would like to thank you for joining us, those of you who are in council chambers and who have joined us virtually. For public comment, just as a reminder, there is a Google Form signup link in the chat for anyone who would like to speak. We also have a form available for those of you who are in chambers with us if you haven't already signed up and would like to speak. Public comment will take place after non-legislative business. We're going to have our opening prayer by Akira Granado.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety. Keep us out of harm's way and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be key in all our endeavors. Amen.
Amen. This time we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our states of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray.
Present.
Councilwoman Darby.
Present.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Present.
Councilwoman Harley.
Present.
Councilwoman Fields.
Present.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Field.
Present.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Present.
Councilman Mills.
Present.
Councilman Spadola.
Present.
President Congo.
Here.
12th present.
All right, thank you. This time I would like to acknowledge some of our dignitaries who were with us this evening. Mayor Przyziki and also Chief of Staff Tanny Washington. I believe that Lieutenant Governor Bethany Hall Long has joined us via Zoom. Also Senator McBride has joined us via Zoom. In council chambers, we have State Rep Stephanie Bolden. Stephanie T. Bolden. How could I have forgotten that? Stephanie, Stephanie T. Bolden. We have Kevin Kelly, Kevin Kelly, former councilman. We have Henny F. Shabazz, a former council president. We have Paul Agnuto, former council member. Along with several community members and civic association leaders. I don't think I missed anyone, any public dignitaries that I don't want to get in trouble. All right, I just wanted to make those recognitions. At this time, we had the reading of the minutes from our previous meeting.
October 6, 2022, City Council met a regular session with remote participation. The above data at 6:30 PM. President Ernest M. Congo, the second presiding. The opening prayer was done by Akira Granado, Deputy City Clerk. The Pledge of Allegiance was recited by City Council. The following members responded to the call of the roll. Councilmembers Gray.
Mr. President, I move the minutes be accepted as written.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the minutes be accepted as written on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. This time we'll have our City Treasurers' Report.
October 20th, 2022. Total investment, 496 million, 360,000, 320 dollars and 81 cents. Total cash on hand, 11 million, 801,000, 66 dollars and 46 cents. Grand total, 508 million, 161,000, 387 dollars and 27 cents. Submitted by Dwayne Sims, City Treasurer.
Mr. President, I move the Treasurers' Report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the Treasurers' Report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. I'll accept a motion to move to accept all non-legislative business.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept all non-legislative business on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Would like to recognize a couple of resolutions from council members, recognitions from Councilwoman Cabrera. A sympathy recognition for June Isley. Also from Councilwoman Oliver, a sympathy recognition for Maisha Michelle Lee. Do any other council members have any presentations? Councilmember McCoy?
Yes, Mr. President. If I can have a parishioner from St. Hedwicks to meet me at the podium? Good evening, everyone. So this, I just wanted to make certain everyone is aware that October is actually Polish-American Heritage Month. I get a phone call pretty much every year from a woman who is a parishioner of St. Hedwicks. Her name is Anna. Hold on, let me make, I don't want to tear her name up. Dobrowalska. And she has made me aware of memorial tribute for General Pulaski every year. And this year, I'm like, we need to make certain that everyone is aware of our Polish heritage, especially in 6th District, which is where that community is. All right, and this is sponsored by myself. Whereas City Council wishes to recognize October 2022 as Polish-American Heritage Month, it was established in 1981 by Michael Bilches, the President of Polish-American Cultural Center in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. And whereas St. Hedwicks has welcomed Polish immigrants in Wilmington since the 1890s. After arriving in Wilmington, they were attracted to Sacred Heart Parish. But after realizing that there was a great need for the growing Polish population, the Benedictine Priests purchased two plots of land at Linden and Harrison Streets. These new parish was founded and held under the patronage of St. Hedwicks, the 13th century Duchess of Poland and Patroness of Ce- Celestia. Since its inception, its commitment to honoring the Polish heritage and community has great addition to the diversity of our city. Whereas to bring more to the Polish culture of our city, St. Hedwicks has hosted the Polish Festival I'm sorry, the Polish Festival for more than six decades. The festival brings family fun, tradition, and Polish foods. After having to cancel the festival due to COVID-19, the community never stopped acknowledging and celebrating its rich history and culture. Ms. Anna Dobrowalska, a parishioner of St. Hedwicks, has been devoted to honoring Pulaski Day at the Pulaski Triangle. Every year on October 11, she organized a tribute for General Kazimir Pulaski Memorial Day. And whereas there is an estimated 9.15 million Polish-Americans, which represents about 2.83% of the US population, according to the 2018 American Community Survey, there are an estimated 4.02 Polish-Americans in the state of Delaware. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington that this council is pleased to honor the month of October as Polish-American Heritage Month. And we would like to thank St. Hedwicks for their continued commitment to sharing their heritage culture with the residents of the City of Wilmington.
On behalf of St. Hedwicks Church, I'd like to thank everybody for this recognition. And please know that the church is open for everybody and please come join us. There's a lot of masses, there's daily masses and three, four weekend masses. So please, join us if you can. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Oliver.
Yes, I would just like to congratulate, I didn't catch the gentleman's name, and Councilwoman McCoy for recognizing Polish as Heritage Month. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Oliver, can you make sure your microphone is on, please? Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we are going to, we're going to ask for WITN to play a video tribute to Councilmember Loretta Walsh.
Well, this is thanking Loretta and saying goodbye for you being on City Council after all these years. And certainly, we have been friends for all of those years, even though we've had battles over differences of opinion, over particular issues. But we've always remained friends as needed to look at the city and love the city and make it a better place. And you've done that. You've done that well. So the city may lose you on City Council, but you're still around to give advice and help people on City Council. But I just wanted to say, thank you. It's been a great ride all these years.
Hi, Loretta. I will miss you so, so much. I will definitely miss your leadership, of course, your guidance on council. But also will just miss your wittiness. No matter what occurred on council, you always found some humor, you found some light, you always found a way and path forward. So I appreciate that and I will miss that on council. In terms of what you've done for our city, it's just invaluable, the work you've done for our most overlooked communities on all sides of the cities, especially our seniors. You've always paid attention to each and every citizen. And it's just very refreshing to have such an old-school leader like yourself. You're always very behind the scenes sponsoring many events. People don't even know you sponsored or supported. And so for that, I thank you for showing us the mold of how to do things for the community without necessarily getting credit for it. I certainly wish you well. I look forward to your guidance, just on the phone as always and in person. As you look forward to getting better and healed, I definitely will still have your ear and thank you for what you've done for us.
Hi, Loretta, my feisty mama. I just want to say that I appreciate you and I thank you for being a person of wisdom, knowledge, and you know, just caliber and just being true to who you are. When I first started council, you know, I looked, I looked to you and I still look to you for wisdom. I looked for you to, for questions, but I didn't even know what it was to be a chair of a committee. You told me what I need to do, how I need to do it. And you gave me some good pauses, even when it came to pieces of legislation or a resolution. And you know, I've been knowing you since I was a child. You did a lot of things with my Aunt Farline Trotter in the community, as well as my mother Mercedes Fields. So you know, to have spent some time with you on council means a lot. And you know, I just appreciate you. I thank you. I wish you well. And you know, I'll be calling you, of course, because I definitely need some more wisdom. And I know you're glad to share it. So just thank you, Loretta, for all that you've done for the City of Wilmington. Thank you for what you've done for me and taught me. And I just wish you well.
Well, Loretta, you will be missed. Your seat may be replaced, but you are irreplaceable. You know, one thing that I'll miss with our conversations is, you know, after you get heated about something, you'd stop and you'd say, James, am I wrong? Am I crazy? Of course, I tell you, no, you're always 100% right. But no, you just had a very self-aware, down-to-earth demeanor, which with, you know, somebody with your experience and knowledge, you know, is impressive. So you'll be missed and I, you know, I hope you enjoy your retirement. I hope you enjoy, you know, the less stressful environment of being not on council for us. So God bless.
Hello, Councilwoman Walsh. Even though we only knew each other for a short time, I think the experience was memorable. I really appreciated staffing your Public Safety Committee and just being able to have a chance to benefit from your sense of history and all the experiences that you've had throughout your career. I appreciate having shared a few laughs and just enjoying having your, your take on so many different things. So I wish you the best. I hope you get some much-needed rest. And I look forward to seeing you just enjoy your, your time and your experiences and the things that you've contributed to. Have a great retirement.
Hi, Councilwoman Walsh. I just want to state that this retirement is well-earned. You have done so much for the City of Wilmington. As a councilwoman at large, you've made certain that you looked after every part of the city, mine included. My communities really appreciate and have always looked forward to hearing from you. As a brand-new councilperson, you were always able to give me no-nonsense answers. And that is all that I ever really needed. To be able to speak to you and get the truth about a matter was important to me. But please know that my phone still will be answered whenever you call. If there's anything that you need from me, I am here, just as you have been here for me and my constituents. I wish you well.
This message is for the Honorable Loretta Walsh. Loretta, I'd just like to thank you. I'd like to thank you for being a trailblazer to so many women of so many colors. I'd like to thank you for being a mentor and for allowing all of us to stand on your shoulders. I'd like to thank you for being the longest-serving City Councilwoman in the state of Delaware. I'd like to thank you for acknowledging the LBTGQ community. And I would like to thank you for being one of the ones who found the Roberto Clemente Baseball League. I'd like to thank you for stepping up and becoming a foster mother when no one was taking on a rose back in that day. I also like to thank you for your tenacity and always trying to bring people together. I'd like to thank you for being the whip that you are. And I must say, you was the best at being the whip. And you are still the whip and you will continue to be the whip. And I'd like to thank you for being the best customer service council member that I've ever known. And I'd like to thank you for always being my friend and respecting me for my opinion. God bless you, Loretta. Honorable Loretta Walsh, you will be missed. Your friend, Xanthia Oliver.
Loretta, you and I have known each other since the 80s, not in city politics, but in Newcastle County politics. And we've got great memories together. But for me, nothing greater than the memories of the past six years. You've made my life much better as mayor. I've leaned on you. I've depended on you. And now you're going to pass that torch to somebody else and it's not going to be the same. All I can tell you is, very few people get to walk away with an almost universal regard for the great job you did for the people of the City of Wilmington. And I hope that's, that's comforting to you because it should be. God bless and all the best.
I'd like to ask Councilmembers Fields and Johnson to come forward, please. Also, Councilmember Walsh's family, if they can come forward, please. Our daughter can come forward? All right, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I have a resolution sponsored by all of Council, City Council. Whereas City, Wilmington City Council wishes to honor those individuals who have made extraordinary contributions to our community and shaped the history of our city. Our esteemed colleague at-large Councilmember Loretta Walsh has demonstrated outstanding achievement and is deserving of such a recognition and acknowledgement. Whereas Councilwoman Walsh has been a diligent and impactful public servant throughout her career. Her tenure as a councilmember has spanned 30 years. Her first term on Wilmington City Council began in 1985 until 1997. She was the first woman elected to serve in the at-large council seat. From 2004 to present, she has served through these years. And whereas at-large Councilmember Loretta Walsh has carried out a range of responsibilities, including President Pro Tem from January 2nd, 2017 to April 5th, 2018. In this 108th session, she served as a Public Safety Committee Chair, Vice Chair of Public Works, and a valued member of the Finance and Economic Development Committee. Whereas during her time on council, she has prioritized public safety, which is her number one, cultivated productive relationships with city departments and external stakeholders, and enacted legislation to improve the quality of life for all Wilmingtonans. Councilmember Walsh has been a staunch advocate for women, seniors, and underrepresented populations. Whereas she takes pride in historical knowledge of city government operations, community civic engagement, and most importantly, the rules of City Council that guide this legislative branch of government. Councilwoman Walsh is known for her no-nonsense approach to legislative matters and her slight dose of humor. Whereas she was the first woman to be selected as the Wilmington Ward Chair, where she served on the 8th Councilmatic District for 12 years, as well as the first female Chief Deputy of Newcastle County Sheriff's Department, a position she held from 1981 until her retirement in 2009. Councilmember Walsh also held various professional roles with the Delaware Council on Criminal Justice within the Delaware State Senate. Whereas Councilwoman Walsh has demonstrated an extraordinary dedication to community. She has actively engaged in numerous organizations, including St. Patrick's State Society, the Opportunity Center Fashion Show Development Committee, the Women's Democratic Club, the 8th City Council District Ward, the Humanity Forums, the Sacred Heart Village, Second Board, United Women Org, Organization of Delaware, and the NAAC. United Women Org Organization of Delaware, and the NAACP. Whereas Councilmember Walsh is a proud mother to one daughter, two grandchildren, and is a foster mother, she is also a colleague, a cherished friend, and a mentor to many, and a respected advocate for the people of Wilmington. Whereas City Councilmember Walsh submitted a letter of resignation on October 6, 2022, resigning from the City Council at-large seat due to ongoing health concerns. Now, therefore, be resolved that the City Council Wilmington, that is legislative body, recognize at-large councilmember Loretta Walsh's outstanding contributions and her steadfast commitment to the residents and the Council of City of Wilmington. A job well done.
Good evening, everyone. This is from the state of Delaware. House of Representatives tribute. Be it hereby known to all that the House of Representatives acknowledged Loretta Walsh, City of Wilmington Councilmember at-large. We commend this outstanding individual for her many years of dedicated service to the city of Wilmington. She served as an at-large councilmember for 30 years, had been first elected in 1985. She served until 1997, and then from 2004, excuse me, until present. Between 2017 and 2018, Councilmember Walsh served as President Pro Tem. Prior to her service to the city of Wilmington, she was the chief deputy for the Newcastle County Sheriff's Office, the first woman to hold this position. She had also worked for the Delaware Council on Crime and Justice and the Delaware State Senate. We applaud Councilmember Walsh's outstanding contributions and bestow our best wishes for relaxing retirement. The House of Representatives extend its sincere congratulations and directs this tribute to be issued on the 20th day of October, 2022. And everybody sign it.
I have a state-of-Dellaware Senate tribute. Be here known that Senators Sarah McBride, Daris J. Brown, and Tizzie Lockman are joined by the Delaware State Senate 151st General Assembly in commending Honorable Loretta Walsh, City Councilwoman at-large. Recognizing her years of distinguished service to the citizens of Wilmington, throughout her tenure, she has tirelessly shared her time and talent and has gained the respect and high regard of all who have good fortune to know her. Councilwoman Walsh started her public career as a community leader. She served as a Wilmington Ward Chair on the Delaware Council for Criminal Justice and was the first female chief deputy of Newcastle County Sheriff's Office. She stands as a shining example of an engaged citizen's power to effect change. She is a strong advocate for equality, public safety, and responsible growth. The sponsors find it most befitting. The Senate recognizes fine public servant and her many contributions to this cherished city. With gratitude and best wishes, the Senate passes this tribute presented Thursday, the 19th of October, 2022. Councilmember Walsh celebrates the culmination of a job well done. It's signed by the entire Delaware state. At this time, I would like to introduce the family. We all know her daughter, and I really just, again, I appreciate everyone being here. And for me, I couldn't envision this moment, but I'm just cherished that I got to work with her and serve with her in many capacities. So again, here's the wonderful Robin, and we would like to present you with the Wilmington City Council gift first. So here you go. Thank you. And if you could say a few words, Robin?
Yes. Hi, everyone. That tribute was amazing. Thank you, and thank you all who said all those kind words about my mom. It really means a lot. And I promised I wouldn't get emotional, but that made me a little emotional, especially looking at the pictures of myself back in the day. So I just want to, first of all, thank you, President Congo, and I want to thank all of the members of council for truly honoring my mother today for her 30 years of service to her beloved city and its constituents. Many of you know that my mother likes to call me her first love, and I believe that's true. But I will tell you that Wilmington is a very, very, very close second. I also want to thank my mother's friends. We have many of them here tonight, and I know other people are making public comments. My mom is a very fierce person. She is very strong, and the friends who have surrounded her over the years are fierce and strong in their support of her. I know it's cliche, but there truly, truly are too many to name. You know who you are, and my mother and I thank you from the bottom of our hearts. My mom, my dad, and I moved to Wilmington in the early 70s. We bought a house on 20th Street. Well, they bought a house. I brought my dog, Shaun, and that was my contribution. And at that point in time, it was actually my dad, Rich Heffron, who was the political candidate. And he ran for City Council way back then against a very entrenched Delaware politician, Wilmington politician, Joe DePinto. And some of you may remember that, and my dad actually didn't win. So for my mom, at that point in time, she actually, the person who really first recognized her to be smart, dedicated, fearless, and a true firecracker, which we all know she is, was Mayor Tom Maloney. And when I asked my mom, "Mom, who do you want me to thank?", she said, "I want you to thank Tom Maloney." And I said, "Well, what about anybody else?". She said, "No, thank Tom Maloney." And she wanted to thank him because he took a chance on her, and he gave her an unpaid position, and that truly did set the foundation for her love of all things Wilmington. At that point in time, I was a teenager, right? I was going to high school, but my mother, and some of you know this, my mother would drag me door-to-door to meet the constituents. She would also bring me to the events. And you all talked about the seniors. She would call them her seniors. And the residences, she would call the high-rises. So when I was young, I thought high-rises were Elektra Arms and Luther Towers and all the places my mom took me. And door-to-door, we'd go for hours. Sometimes, nobody would be home. Occasionally, she would have a door shut in her face. And many times, though, she would stand on the porch for five or 10 minutes, just listening and talking. And when we went to the senior events, of course, it was much harder to drag her away. I would nudge her. I would give her a hairy eyeball many, many times. And sometimes, she would just have somebody drive me home so she could linger a little longer with her seniors. She would laugh with them. She would smile with them. She would hold hands with them, and she would hug them. For my mom, no issue was unimportant, and no person was unimportant. I know that many of you today will talk about her accomplishments, and they are many, and they are profound. And I know people may not have been here at the time, but at the time when she first served on council and was the first woman elected, and I think it was actually the most votes that time, as a congressman or as a city council member for a first time. And I'll let you all talk about them, but that is really not what I remember as I watched her over the years on City Council. What I remember is what I learned from watching her. And what I learned is empathy, compassion for others. I learned to be present, to lean in, to help others. And I learned that you must fight for what you believe in. And my mother has always, always fought for what she believed in, whether it was letting women into the University and Whisk Club, whether it was fighting for gay rights before. Many people were fighting for gay rights. She was always at the forefront. So I wanted to leave you off the, you all know, obviously Wilmington. It comes Robin, Wilmington, anything Irish. So I have an Irish proverb that I want to read to you that my mother actually picked out. And the proverb is, "The best things in life are the people we love, the places we have been, and the memories we have made along the way." I know my mom will forever cherish the memories she has made on City Council, and I know she will make new memories with many of you here today as she goes into her well-deserved retirement. So I want to thank you all for her beautiful tributes, for all of the pictures and the things I know that a lot of her constituents and friends will be saying tonight, and thank you, councilmembers, for honoring her.
Robin, if you can, Robin, if you can just stay where you are for a second. Let the call-up, Mayor Prizicki. I think he wants to present you with a gift.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks for the invitation to join you. Robin, I hope my kids will say something that nice about me whenever I retire. I'm afraid, I'm afraid they're going to fall up short. I was thinking out here what I wanted to say, and honestly, I think I said it as well as I know how in the video. That was great. It happened a while ago, and I'd forgotten what I had said, but I think that conveys my feelings perfectly. I think the part of Loretta that I think that's being missed here today is, Loretta would call me, didn't of course, the day, and she always called me mayor. She's known me for 40 years, and I've been Mike for as long, but she has such respect for the office of mayor, she would always call me mayor. And she would say, "Mayor, what the hell are you guys doing?". And she reminded me, she reminded me that she's been around a long time, and she had a good sense of what was done right and what was not done right, and she never spared me. She wasn't worried about my feelings. So, Loretta, I've said it as well as I think I can on the video. I can't tell you how much respect and affection I have for you, for you've accomplished. I played football 100 years ago for a great coach, and he sent me a note one day, and he said, "My wife and I", he said, "I've heard it said that it's better to be respected than to be loved, and I just want you to know, we respect you." Well, Loretta, we do respect you, but we love you, too. Robin, we've got, I've got a tribute as well. It rehashes some of the same things we've heard. You can only say these things so much, but I guess the last sentence says it best. So on behalf of a very grateful city of Wilmington, thank you, Loretta, for all you have done for generations of residents and businesses that call Wilmington home. You will be missed. God bless. I have, I've got a personal note to you as well. We've got some, we've got some things we're going to give Robin to take along with you, something you can keep you from, you won't forget us. You can, every time you look at the clock, you'll be there. Yeah, right. So God bless you. We miss you wherever you are. Thank you.
So, Mayor, along with probably the majority of current councilmembers and some councilmembers who are in the crowd, especially me, we can, we can understand when Loretta would call and say, "Hey, what the hell are you doing?". I probably got that more than any of you guys combined, but I really do appreciate her for, like, that has been mentioned already, for her tenacity. And Robin, I want to thank you, because as much as your mother has done for our city, I'm sure that it came with a sacrifice for you. So thank you for lending your mother to us. And Loretta, we just wish you Godspeed in your health. We know that you are not going anywhere anytime soon. You're still going to be an integral part of our city, and just thank you for everything that you have done for the city of Wilmington. Do any other councilmembers wish to have any comments? At this time, Councilmember Harley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I too want to just thank Councilwoman Walsh for, number one, her service to our city for the last 30 years. And I also want to thank her for her leadership. We started in the 107th session, and throughout the four years that we served together, I too can echo a lot of the comments that have already been shared. But the one that I was thinking about as I listened and I thought about Loretta was when I was chairing the Education, Youth, and Family Committee meeting, and I pretty much would just come in and sit anywhere. And I'll never forget her letting me know that when you're the chair, where you're supposed to sit at. And so I really did appreciate that, because at the time, it didn't really matter, but she definitely was one that mentored. She definitely was one that would let you know what the do's and don'ts were. And so, again, I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your service, and I wish you all the best with your health and in your next chapter as you go into your retirement. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Nathan Field.
Yes. Councilwoman Walsh, thank you, and I am looking forward to hearing about your retirement. For those who don't know, Councilwoman Walsh is my neighbor, and about three years ago, she moved literally 20 feet away from me. And so we have probably talked almost every day, sometimes multiple times a day, and she's become a key advisor and mentor to me. And, I mean, because there's literally nothing that a new councilperson can see that she hasn't seen 100 times over, and she's always given me extremely frank advice and sometimes told me I'm being naive. And I just really want to thank her, and I look forward to visiting her in her new location or hopefully welcoming her back when she moves back to our building. Thanks.
Thank you. Any see no other comments from council? I would like to-
I have my hand raised, Mr. President.
Okay. Councilmember Cabeza.
Thank you, thank you. Well, my apologies that I could not be there in person for this wonderful, wonderful acknowledgement and a thank you to my colleague, my friend, my sister, Loretta Walsh. But I did want to say a few words. When I first met Loretta, I was working for Mayor Sills as the receptionist and then the special events coordinator. And I have to admit, I was a little scared of her. She was, she just had that strong character. She would nod her head and say hello, always friendly, would say a word or two, but still, you know, I'm like, wow, I don't want to mess with that lady. And then I remember when she ran for mayor against Mayor Sills, and Mr. Poperty also ran at that time. I didn't like when she was debating and would say things, you know, against the mayor, but, you know, in making her point. But still, I admired her. I admired her from the distance, because first of all, here I see this woman running for mayor with these two men standing her ground. She always stood her ground. She was such an example for the rest of us to see, and still to this day, we have yet to see a woman lead the city, and I hope to see that one day. But those were the examples that I saw of Loretta Walsh outside of becoming her council colleague. So now I got elected to office, and I came to my first meeting, and Loretta welcomed me with open arms. There were folks who said, "I'll be careful with her" and, you know, little comments that were made, but I will say this, that she welcomed me. She said to me, "Maria, anything that you need, anything at all, any advice, any help, please feel free to call on me." And I did, multiple times. And there were many, many times that we were on different sides of the issues, as Mayor Baker said. But one thing I respect is that it was never taken personal. It didn't matter how the vote went on that floor, whether we were on opposing sides. We still walked out of there as friends, as colleagues, and we respected each other. And she has really been someone who I admire, look up to, has given me great advice throughout the years. And although I'm going to miss sitting next to her on that City Council floor, I knew that this was the best thing for her to take care of her health so that she can continue to guide us, as the pressures of being a leader are not easy. So just want to say thank you, Loretta, for all the years that you have been a role model for us women as we look into the future to be the leaders, not just of the city, but in our nation and across. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. I will miss you. Thank you. Thank you.
And thank you, Councilmember Cabrera. All right, I'd like to, again, thank you, Robin, for joining us this evening. At this time, we are going to move to public comment. Just for some housekeeping, we do have to vote to extend public comment past 7:30.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Chris.
Yes, Councilwoman Oliver, not yet, not yet, please, not yet. That's okay. That's all right, thank you. We do just have to take a vote to extend public comment past 7:30, which I'm sure we would do because several people have signed up from the community and also to honor Councilmember Walsh. So, before we get started with public comment, I'd just like to make a motion to extend public comment past 7:30.
Some more.
It's been moving second to extend public comment past 7:30. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carried. Again, just as a friendly reminder for public comment, there is a Google form signup link in the chat for anyone who has not signed up yet but would like to speak. Please keep your remarks to three minutes, and please do not direct any of your comments towards council members, but only to me. We are going to ask for the elected officials to come forward first. You can line up on my left, those elected officials who would like to give public comment. Please come up at this time, please.
Good evening, Mr. President and our wonderful city council members. Lieutenant Governor Hall Long, and I'm joined by Senator McBride and your former city colleague and current House Representative member Stephanie T. Bolden. We'll be very brief. We just wanted to come in person and to Loretta and her family, to Robin who was here, just wish her the best in retirement. I'm not going to read the proclamation in its entirety, but just mention that myself and Governor John Carney, myself, Lieutenant Governor Hall Long, really cherish Loretta. Those of you know, and as I look to other council persons in the audience and to Cassandra and others who've been very active in the city to uplifting our community, Loretta was one of the first women I encountered when I returned home three decades ago, and it was a phenomenal experience to have her mentorship, her leadership. And like all I mentioned, she is a force of nature, and we knew when she was frank that we need to stand up straight and follow what she suggested. So, Loretta, we have, on behalf of the governor and myself, a tribute acknowledging your remarkable service to this state, and it is signed by the governor and myself, and it's very long to read, so I'm going to defer so that these other two fine ladies have a moment to let them, let you know they are here too. So, Loretta, the best to you, ma'am.
Mr. President, thank you so much for giving us the chance to speak. Councilmembers, my name's Sarah McBride, and I'm proud to be here on behalf of the Wilmington Senate delegation, Senator Lockman, Senator Brown, and myself, to celebrate the ongoing legacy of Councilmember Loretta Walsh. I will say I'm a little concerned because with Councilmember Walsh no longer being 25 feet from Nathan Field, Councilmember Field's apartment, we need to make sure that we get someone to make sure he continues to behave, so someone needs to step up and do that. But when I think of Councilmember Walsh, all of these comments, I think, highlight two things that come to mind, that she's a trailblazer and a truth teller. They say that you fight to get a seat at the table, and if they don't let you at the table, you bring up a folding chair, and Loretta Walsh brings up a folding chair. She makes sure that her voice is heard, and through her voice, the constituents that she represents, the neighbors that she love, that she loves, are heard as well. And she's a truth teller. I think I'm not the only one who says that oftentimes I'll get a call from Loretta, and she'll have some advice for me, and I don't always love hearing it, but she's pretty much always right. There's always something in there to learn from and to grow from. And so, this council, this city, this state is better for her service, and I look forward to continuing to work with her to make this state as strong and as just and as good as its people. Thank you very much, Loretta.
Mr. President, members of city council, I'm glad to see some things are here that I still remember, like this step here, and the short chairs. We also had the opportunity, and thank you, Councilmember, for reading our tribute, but it was sponsored by myself and Sherri Dorsey Walker and Namdi, as well as Frank Cook, the representatives for the city of Wilmington, and all the members of the State House of Representatives, names are on there. I had the privilege of serving with Loretta, so this is my tribute to Loretta Walsh, Wilmington City Councilwoman at Large, my confidant, my friend, and my sister. It's a pleasure to stand here and be able to speak and give some information this evening about Loretta and her underlying, undying services that she presented to the citizens of the city of Wilmington. Her unwavering dedication, knowledge, and citizens' confidence to reelect her, most of the time with the highest votes in the whole city of Wilmington as a council member at large, established the wisdom that one acquires through teamwork, listening, and learning. She had the privilege of presiding on council for many mayors. Some of you know, some of you were here as well. She started under Mayor Frawley when I was here, then Mayor Seals, Mayor Williams, and our current mayor, Mayor Mike Przycki. We served together from 1993, when I was first elected, and again, when she returned to council in 2004, until 2010 for myself, when I went to the State House. Councilwoman Walsh is a wealth of knowledge on structure, on rules, on regulations, and how city council operates. Her expertise of the law, contracts, budget, and the importance of working with the state representatives awarded the city a lot of financial funding for police, fire, and for the administration to get the best that needs to be done for the city of Wilmington. Loretta and I had a great relationship. Why? Because we worked together, we agreed and disagreed on legislation, but in the end, we both realized it was about, not about us, but about the city of Wilmington and the citizens in which we serve. We shared a position of President Pro Tem. Our birthdays are both in August, we're both Leos, and the only time I realized I understood a joke is when she told it, and I continued to laugh because her face was so straight when she's telling these jokes that you can't do anything about it. And I guess I got the essence of the joke, I don't know. But anyway, on a personal note, Loretta was, another side of her was one of friendship and opening up her house to everyone. She was a foster mother, which I am, these were the relationships we had and maintained together, and she kept in contact with her daughter, her foster daughter, throughout the years. She loved to entertain and share her family and friends, and I always felt like a member of the family because I was always there, and I was very proud to know Robin and Jack and Ally when they were so little. And now I saw their picture up there, and I can't believe how grown they are and how gorgeous they are, and our sister Patty and Debbie, who could not be here. Loretta always had dinners at her house for everyone, and I was always there with friends like Cassandra Marshall, Lynn Fuller, Richard, Patty, and Anthony. Loretta's wisdom, knowledge, and service to this body and the citizens of the city of Wilmington is an instrument to this council and should be a pathway for all of us to learn from and prosper now, in the future, and as we enter into the field of service, whether it's politics or of your choosing. There are many people that we come across in life, and I hope to get, I hope, and I've had the privilege to cherish the friendship, the love, and respect, and admiration that I have for this lady, retired Councilwoman Loretta Walsh, Councilwoman at Large, sorry, a little emotional. I was very close to her. She helped me when my sister was doing bad in Baltimore, and I was driving every day after school. So, her affection and her giving, I just can't put in words. And I hope that each and every one of you in this body, as you continue your jobs as in politics, representing your district, and representing the city of Wilmington as a whole, I hope that you keep in mind all the things that she did, the lessons she tried to teach, and the camaraderie she tried to build with each and every one of you. May her service to this body remain steadfast. Thank you for the opportunity this evening.
And if you can remember, as I was acknowledging those elected officials who were present, when I mentioned Councilwoman, State Rep. Bolden's name, she reminded me there's a T in her middle name, and that, as you just noticed, that T stands for talkative. So, we want to remind everyone that there is a three-minute timeframe. She just took about six people's time allotment, but at this time, we're going to ask if-
That's why President Trump would never let me talk.
We're going to ask any former elected officials, if you're present and if you'd like to give any acknowledgement towards Councilmember Walsh, if you can come forward at this time, please stand up on my left.
Good evening, and thank you for the privilege-
Thank you.
-President Congo. Loretta and I started, Loretta came back on council, we started together in 2004, and at that time, it was just three women on council, along with Stephanie T. Bolden at that time was a council member. And to be among that duel on both sides as a newbie, I was truly blessed. I had on one, you know, one side, an individual telling me what their knowledge, and then you had Loretta Walsh. And Loretta was such a teacher, mentor, and friend, and you couldn't help but to get it right with her, with you, because she would pull you to the side or tell you at the moment. But she just gave me so much wisdom and really showed me what public service was all about. She's definitely not a politician. She's definitely a public servant, and the examples and lessons that she shared with me truly helped me to be the public servant that I was. And I can't thank her for, can't thank her for all that she has told me through public service, but mostly as a friend, you know, because one thing Loretta, you can, people can say about Loretta, that she is, if she's your friend, she is your friend. And a lot of things that people already said about her, but I just wanted to say what she did for me, and we would be differences of opinion sometimes on the floor, but afterwards, the lessons and the examples that she shared afterwards, let me see why there was a difference so I better understood. And she also emphasized the importance of knowing the rules, knowing the law, knowing the history, because that is our job as legislators. And so, Loretta, I just want to thank you wherever you are, if you're watching this, for all that you've done for me, our many, many personal conversations, our laughter that we had, and our glasses of wonder we've had also. But, you know, it's great to be able to come into a body such as this and to know that you've got a person like a Loretta Walsh there to guide you, to support you, and mostly but to cherish you as a friend. So, thank you, Loretta.
My name is Paul Agnewdo, for those who don't know me or remember me. I was on city council in the 7th District in Mr. Johnson's seat. And I can tell you, you know, being on city council with Loretta Walsh, she sat two seats over from me, and she always had something to say. She couldn't ever hold back. She always had something to say, whether it was on the microphone or in my ear, telling me, "Hey, how are you voting? You know, are we supporting this? Are you supporting this? Do you have a problem with this? What are your issues?" She always did that. And you know what? I respected that because not only did I respect her, and as I should, because she was very long-tenured and very respectable, a very respectable person, but she respected me, in my opinion, and what I thought, and she wanted to hear what I thought about an issue, and that was important. But on a personal note, you know, I grew up on the west side of Wilmington. I grew up literally down the street from Loretta Walsh, and, you know, growing up, I sort of leaned toward politics. I was that nerdy kid that would watch Channel 22, growing up, and, you know, and watch council and watch, you know, Jay Prado and Charlie Yates and Loretta Walsh and many, many others. I don't want to get into all that, but it was interesting to me, and, you know, the fact that she lived down the street from me and the fact that I could walk down her house and say, "Hey, you know, this is kind of cool what you do," you know, and she would always encourage me. I volunteered. I got very involved with Mayor Frawley's campaign, where I got a little more into politics and learned more about what Loretta Walsh stood for, because, you know, we were all kind of together. I did some lit drops for her. I learned about how to campaign, how to door knock, somebody talked about, I think, Robin, I think you talked about going door to door, while I watched her, I watched people like her and Mayor Frawley and Buddy Freel, and those are the people I looked up to. And when I got on council and I sat two, you know, seats away from her, I was like, "Wow, this is amazing." So, Loretta, thank you for everything you've done for the city. I really don't know, my whole life was, had Loretta Walsh in a public position, I think for a few years she was off, but I don't know a city without Loretta Walsh in government. But she worked hard, she deserves it. See, I have 10 seconds left, I'm not going to do a Stephanie T. Bolden, and I'm going to wrap up. So, thank you very much, Loretta. Enjoy your retirement, and I hope to see you soon.
Good evening. For those that remember me, I'm Kevin F. Kelly, Sr. I had the pleasure of serving this body for 20 years and 12 with Loretta Walsh, and we'll get to that, but I have a brief statement I'm going to read from State Representative Helene Keely. I'll keep that a part of my three minutes, President Congo. This is from State Representative Helene Keely, and these are very appropriate words here. "Loretta was a pivotal part in breaking the glass ceiling for elected Wilmington here in Delaware. She, along with Ruth Ann Minner and others, showed young women like myself that there was room at the table for us, and more importantly, that when we sat at those tables, we changed the conversation and direction for Wilmington and Delaware. Loretta fought hard to make sure Wilmington was forward-thinking, and you can see that from all around this great city. Her continued love and selfishness, I am so proud to have her be a friend. Congratulations on your retirement and best wishes." From Helene Keely. On a personal note, I guess, Robin, I was just the brother you never had because your mother used to scream and holler at me all the time. "Kevin, what are you doing?" Smoke and mirrors, that was her famous statement. Everything was smoke and mirrors here on city council. But Loretta, you know, loved this city. She was a champion. The other day, I was with Councilmember Mills and a few other people over at Parkview, and we were talking to some senior citizens, and their senior recognized me, and her first word out of that, "How's Loretta doing?" I said, "She's doing fine." She said, "You tell her that we still love her." So, that passion from people, that was Loretta, you know, she had, when you're at large, you kind of fit into a certain area of people that you try and help out and take care of, but she helped everybody out. We had our drag-out fights and so forth, but I knew Loretta probably since 1980 when I was helping Mike Walsh run for sheriff, and through that time, you know, she is a- And through that time, you know, she is a friend and a mentor. She's always guided me from different ways. She always asked about my family. I got three boys. They're challenging at times. And Robyn, I get you. You know, you had to go around knocking on doors all the time with that. But there's not a single neighborhood in this city that Loretta Walsh didn't go into. There's not a single person she didn't care about over time. The challenge for elected officials, as you grow into the position and you're not 40 anymore and you're 70-something, and people tend to look at you at the end and maybe what you are, and they forget that journey of what you did to get where you were at. And it's a long journey. And for Loretta, the journey will continue. But she changed a lot of people's mindsets about the city, worked with a lot of people. But you know, we're going to miss a champion of the city. You know, we are. People are going to really miss her. But somebody will come along and take her place. Somebody will come and do it and will work with whoever that person is. But I'm thankful that I had the opportunity to be one of her personal friends and she'll still continue to guide me and be a mentor. And we wish her Godspeed, Robyn, you and the family and everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, we are going to call on those who are in council chambers. And just to keep the message uniform, we're going to ask those of you who are coming to speak to Loretta, to Councilman Walsh, to come forward first. Everyone will have an opportunity to give public comment. But I'm going to call you up, just those who are speaking to Councilmember Loretta Walsh first. Jim Miller, if you can come forward, please. And please watch your step and please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. President, council. Thanks for the opportunity to talk. My name is Jim Miller. Excuse me?
Go ahead, continue, continue.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Jim Miller. I worked, I had the pleasure of working with Loretta as her campaign manager. And one thing I learned is, is it would be impossible for anyone to thrive in and survive 30 years of, of politics in Wilmington without making some people upset. Disagreements, misunderstandings, arguments. Thankfully for Loretta, she started her political career by pissing people off right off the bat. She never had to worry about it later. And I say this lovingly because there was people in her own party who did not want her to run, including leadership. And I learned this was because this was one of the first stories she told me, was they did not want a woman holding a citywide office all because she was a woman. This is the mid-'80s, 1985. Of course, if you know Loretta, you would know that if you tell her she can't do something, that's exactly what she's going to do. And she did. I got to learn a lot about Loretta as her campaign manager. And it was easy fighting for her because you could see the way she fought for this city. And that's how everyone on the team felt, is that you saw this tenacity, this passion, this almost Rocky Balboa-like dedication. And if you can picture this, go back a few years, we're talking about a 70-year-old woman with respiratory issues during COVID, a disease that is specifically focused on respiratory issues. And she fought every day. And so it was very easy to fight for her. We have a lot of ways of, of measuring intelligence, physical capabilities, athleticism. We don't have a way to measure heart. The only way we can measure heart is by time and by the measure of our lives. Loretta has heart. She loves this city. You don't survive 30 years in politics without making some people upset. And you don't survive 30 years in politics without a love for this city. Thank you for, thank you for your time, Loretta. Thank you for serving this city.
Regina Lafferty, if you can please come forward. Regina Lafferty is in council chambers tonight. If you may raise your hand if you're on Zoom. Next, we'll go to Walter Ferris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm here to just express my gratitude and appreciation for Loretta Walsh. I've known her since I came on the police department in 1989. And I knew her through all those years. Even though she won't be here in the building, I'm hoping her legacy continues. And there's, there's three things I always thought about Loretta. And it came to mind when I heard, unfortunately, she was, she was leaving. The first is that you can never say she was weak. She was tough. In fact, I would probably pick her over some other cops for my backup in a street fight. She was tough. She stood by her principles. And if she was right, she wasn't going to budge. The second is, you can never say she didn't care. You could argue with her tactics, her analysis, her approaches, sometimes the way she said things. But you can never say she didn't care about this city. And that was something that came out all the time, that she cared about the city government, the neighborhoods, the people. She cared so much about Wilmington. And the third is going to seem odd coming from a retired police officer, but she didn't always agree with the police. And that's exactly what the kind of governance you need. When she thought the police were right, she backed them up. And if they weren't, then, you know, things had to happen. And that was that kind of calm. She didn't run off, jump to conclusions when, you know, big things happened. She kind of waited out to see everything develop. And she didn't fly off the handle. She was calm and that steady leadership. And she looked at each incident and that, on the basis of whether it was right or wrong, justified or not. And that's the kind of leadership that police officers like. We don't always expect people to agree with us, but to be calm and like, let justice work its way out. So Loretta, enjoy your retirement, but you will be sorely missed in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Lawrence Smith. Please watch your step and introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mr. President and the members of the city council. My name is Lawrence Smith. I live in the Ninth Ward area of the city of Wilmington. Hey, Bob. Councilman Loretta Walsh. Throughout your career as a city Wilmington at-large, city councilwoman, you have demonstrated your love, commitment and dedication on the great works you championed during your career as a councilwoman. Steve Jobs said, "The only way to be truly satisfied is to do what you believe is great work. And the only way to do great work is to love what you do." Loretta, you were an exemplary councilwoman. A great job, my friend. Stay strong. Peace. Lawrence Larry Smith.
Thank you. Byard, Maron. I'm not sure if they're in chambers or on Zoom. If you are on Zoom, if you can raise your hand.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I've known Loretta since I, pretty much since I moved into Quaker Hill 37 years ago. I'm not sure whether that was before she became a councilperson or after, but we have been close ever, ever since we first met. Since the beginning, Loretta has seen the great potential of Quaker Hill. It, as you probably all know, Quaker Hill has incredible architecture. The original architecture of Wilmington is in Quaker Hill. It has a fantastic history of the Underground Railroad and John Dickinson and of course, George Washington slept there. So she recognized this and, and supported us always and always encouraged us. I, I became the president of the Neighborhood Association and also formed the Quaker Hill Historic Preservation Foundation. At every step of the way, for all these many years, she has always supported us. And even when we felt a little bit down, encouraged us. And she has always been our friend, always. When, if we needed something, if we, if we needed a, a way to get into the city, we had a friend in Loretta Walsh. We will miss that friend. Well, she'll always be our friend. But we'll miss that friend in government. But hopefully, we'll move on and recognize all the great works that she has done and has made our life so much better. Thank you, Loretta.
Thank you. Next, we have Carrie Christine McElron. Yes, everyone will have an opportunity to speak, but we're going to keep the message uniform and allow everyone who is coming to speak for Loretta to speak first. So Carrie Christine McElron, if you're on Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for this opportunity to remark before city council in recognition of retiring Councilwoman Loretta Walsh. My name is Carrie Christine McElron, Chair of the Fifth Ward Democratic City Committee. I moved to the city 17 years ago. It was not long after that that I first met the diehard gravel-voiced Democrat, as veteran reporter Chris Barish calls her in his recent WHYY piece, then in her second tour of duty as one of our at-large representatives. From very early on in my Delaware residency, Loretta was always available to talk local politics and city affairs. In that same WHYY article, Mayor Baker says she was always someone that you could go and talk to about an issue. And she's always been really pro-Wilmington and wanted to see Wilmington do very, very well and always stood up for making Wilmington a better place. That has always been my experience and that of so many others with Loretta. On a personal level, one night, we were having a late-night text chat. As night owls, we've had many of these over the years and discovered that we had both grown up in the same neighborhood in Delaware County, Pennsylvania. As a kid, I knew her parents, who still lived in the house around the block from me that she grew up in. And we traded tales of mutual old friends and neighbors and compared experiences of growing up some years apart in a small post-war suburb. From that night on, Loretta became my city mama. From texting each other must-watch binge TV to supporting local campaigns and talking legislation and generally sharing all the good and not-so-good news of our daily lives. She has been my go-to confidant for all the mothering I needed as I navigated my grown-up life in our mutually adopted and beloved city. And when I got married in front of my Cool Spring home, I carried the beautiful bouquet she so generously gifted me, a symbol of all the love I remembered from my childhood and of the woman who had become such a loving, loyal and influential woman in my Wilmington life. Thank you, Loretta, for your incredible service to and support of so many in this city and for being such a wonderful city mama to another Delaware Democrat transplant from the old neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Priscilla Raichstraw.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members, friends of Loretta, and especially Robyn. I'm honored to be here tonight to represent the Ministry of Caring and especially to honor our dear friend, donor, supporter, advocate, Loretta Walsh. This year marks her 10th year of serving on the Sacred Heart Housing Board of Directors, working to develop affordable housing to address the critical shortage in the city. She also served on the Sacred Heart Village Board, Sacred Heart Village Two Board, housing for low-income seniors. She's been an outspoken and dedicated member of the Ministry of Caring family. To quote Brother Ronald, "When God and Loretta Walsh are on your team, you can create great things." Personally, I want to pay tribute to my neighbor, my friend and my fellow warrior. I think Loretta is the personification of, I did it my way. She told me to move into the city and I would love it. And I did. And she was right. It was my pleasure to work in her last two campaigns, even if I was one of the few or only Republicans in the room. Thank you, Loretta, for your leadership and your friendship. And Brother Ronald and I will be seeing you soon. Thank you all.
Thank you. Kathryn Clocko. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand so you can be on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. President. My name is Kathy Clocko and I'm a member of the St. Patrick's Day Society, which you all know as the fundraising arm of the St. Patrick's Center in Wilmington. Loretta Walsh has been a member of the society for over 25 years. And she was the first female member nominated by who else but Michael Perkins. She has been and continues to be very supportive of the center, encouraging donations of clothing, supplies and money. To many resources that she had helped the center in numerous ways, many to mention, particularly helping the seniors in the 1919801 area. We at the, at the society love Loretta and we wish her well in her retirement and hope to see her next year at the St. Patrick's Day Celebration, which she has attended for over 25 years. Thank you and God bless, Loretta.
Thank you. Kathleen Patterson. Kathleen Patterson, if you're on Zoom, if you can raise your hand so you can be unmuted. We'll go back to Regina Lafferty and Cassandra Marshall. Please watch your step and introduce yourself as you come forward. Cassandra, thank you.
Good evening and thank you, Council President Congo, city council and council guests. My name is Cassandra Marshall and I'm the president of the Quaker Hill Neighborhood Association, but also Chair of the Wilmington City Democratic Committee. But the most important title that I have here today is a friend of Loretta Walsh. First note that while State Party Chair Betsy Maron could not be with us tonight, I want to note that the Delaware Democratic Party joins all of us in celebrating the historic and brilliant career of Councilwoman Walsh. Since she came to Delaware, she was a staunch supporter of the party, working hard with all of our Democrats during a time when democratic registrations and power were nowhere near where they are today. We honor and thank one of the early believers who helped us get to the majorities that we have and helped so many candidates and electeds achieve so much. The State Party will adopt a resolution at our December meeting to commemorate Councilwoman Walsh's service and to congratulate her on her storied legislative career. Now, this is speaking for me. Several others have also noted her historic career as a Wilmington leader and legislator, so I won't repeat all of that. But I want to highlight Loretta's large heart for Wilmington, for its people, and especially for all of the Wilmingtonans working hard to make their corner of the city a little better. She's a natural-born builder of relationships, of coalitions. She's a natural-born builder of relationships, of coalitions, and of ideas and policies that are meant to make all of our lives better here in the city. And she's always ready to join your corner when you need to fight for better policy or better services. My own story with Loretta, we met a week, when she was a week early for a candidate walk-around that Quaker Hill was hosting with city council candidates at the time. We had a great conversation that day on Byard Marin's doorstep, and she came back for the scheduled walk-around, and a week later, she kidnapped me to join her campaign. And it was that fast, too. One moment she was a candidate talking about the dreams of a neighborhood, and the next, I was at the weekly Sunday campaign meetings. At some point, I started baking a cake for every one of those meetings and have been a permanent part of the Loretta Walsh campaign team ever since. This means that she also brought me into a circle of permanent friends and family who have made my life here in Wilmington fun and meaningful. We've been friends ever since. She's a generous friend, and I've witnessed her working hard to support other women, women with political ambitions, working hard to support Wilmington's mayor and council, especially during difficult times, and working hard to make sure the constituents have what they need to make their lives better. One of Councilwoman Walsh's greatest achievements and lessons is in her unfailing responsiveness to Wilmington residents and their needs. If you know Loretta, you know that she may respond to your mail, texts, and phone calls at all hours of the day, and she's delivering solid answers and solutions through all of that late-night work. She attended neighborhood meetings all over the city, joined neighborhood Facebook groups to address issues as they came up, supported our nonprofits, helped to arrange community events, provided scholarships and mentoring to so many of our youth, and quietly helped families that needed food and shelter to get just that. She's been a perceptive and empathetic ear to so many, everyone from governors to the cashiers at 7-Eleven, providing the perfect example of what we want our leadership and our neighbors to be. There is just no one more dedicated to Wilmington and to each of us, more than Loretta Walsh. Loretta's best lesson to me is that you don't need to lose yourself, your opinions, or your friends in order to be an effective change-maker. We live in a moment that needs more of this generosity of commitment. I know that I have a long way to get there, but I'll always know that I have Loretta's light to guide me. Thank you so much for your service and for your very great friendship, Councilwoman Walsh. Thank you.
And we'll go back to Kathleen Patterson on Zoom.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'd like to say, I moved to Wilmington maybe thirteen years ago and shortly after started to attend council meetings and was noticed Councilwoman Walsh and her tenacity in meetings, how she would always question the police department about the toys they wanted to buy. And somehow, over the course of this time, I, we became friends. I'm not exactly sure how, how that all came about, but now I feel like Loretta is, is almost family to me. She welcomes us, my husband and myself, to her home for many meals and introduced me to many folks, such as Cassandra that just spoke. And I can tell from all my experience with her, watching her at council and our individual chats and the discussions at her home, that she truly is a woman that loves this city and has dedicated so much to the city. And I kind of think she welcomed me into her circle because she recognized that I too love this city and I'm very thankful for the opportunities she has afforded me. She's recommended me for boards or commissions and, and she's always frank with me and tells me sometimes that I'm naive, but also listens to my ideas, and we have great discussions about what's going on in this city. And I think that we will really miss her voice on council. It's been so steady for so long, but I do believe she deserves this time to rest in retirement. And thank you, Loretta, for all you've done for the city of Wilmington and for bringing me into your circle of friends.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else here or on Zoom to speak to Councilmember Walsh? If not, Kevin Malloy. Kevin Malloy, please. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I, I wanted to speak because after watching and listening tonight, it just reaffirms the importance of people to step up to the plate, such as Loretta Walsh. And she was a trailblazer, but also she's an example of public service that we can all, we all need to respect and learn from. I'm not always easy to listen to, and I will say that she always listened to me and she always responded. Some other things I heard tonight that I think are worth repeating is she had a generosity of commitment. She was very, she's very committed to the city of Wilmington, as I am and as so many others, but she's a great example of the tenacity and the persistence and the frankness and being on point that is an example of public service that we should all be inspired by. We also need to know that we're all human, and there's a time for us to retire, and I'm so thankful that she's taking this time for herself and for her family and enjoy a great retirement as she's had a great career and a great commitment to the city of Wilmington. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This time, I'm going to ask for Rosalyn Webb. Come forward, please. And please watch your step as you step to the podium, and please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Rosalyn Webb. I'm on it here on behalf of my daughter, Jerina Green. I've been living in Wilmington, Delaware, all my life, forty-two years a Wilmington resident. I had came out tonight off the behalf of her with a football game last month on the sixteenth, and my daughter had got, we trying to figure out how she end up on the ground with the police on her back. They did release the video, but I have a couple videos, but they clipped out a lot of stuff, and we needs the whole video, about fifteen officers out there. So I know they have the footage of everything that happened that night, and I want to know what happened to my daughter. Any parent would want to know what happened to their child. Why is a cop sitting on her back? And now I have to take her to doctor's appointments and therapists and all that, and physical therapy because the officer slammed and sat on her back.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Robin Webb. I'm Jerina Green's grandmother, and I've seen the footage. And the way he tackled her is like a person tackled somebody playing football, you know? And when it was told to him that she had health issues and hip replacement, she has MS, so her bones are fragile. He said it wasn't, how did he say it? It wasn't his problem, you know? And when they picked her up, they drug, picked her up like this, which didn't make sense. Matter of fact, this way with her hands up in the air, where he could have broke her shirt. She had just had dislocated shoulder, you know, but he didn't care. It wasn't no sense. It was four girls, and if you look at the footage, all of them was handled properly until it came to her. And whoever this officer is, they talks about him bad all the time, and I've been here fifty-nine years, and it's something needs to be done because we shouldn't be treated because of our color the way they treat us, and they do it to our kids all the time. My son is thirty-three years old. He has a mental health problem. I called for months to get help. They would take him out the home, leave him in the street. The first time they did it, my son got beat up by the police. We didn't know. They told us they had sent, took him to a mental hospital. This time, when they put him out, he went to the store. Next thing I know, I'm looking for him two days later, he's in the hospital where he got shot up, you know? All because, the first thing they said, put him out. I wouldn't have had it, this child need help. I called, I talked to everybody, and they said, yes, they is supposed to take the shot, take him, even though he ran or not, take him to be seen and evaluated. They took him there, left him at Wilmington Hospital door, they left, and after they left, he left. And this been going on for eight or nine months straight. You know, so they, I know they don't care about us, you know? And they getting paid, that's right. And nobody shouldn't have to go through that. I don't care what race, color, or whatever you are. If there's help and you need help or something's going on, and when they called, he knew it was school of kids. Kids fight all the time, and that's not the way you handle it because they got parents. If it was that bad, you should have called the parent there, not to handle it. And like I said, she was the only one to handle them properly.
Thank you. Just for clarity, which police department was this?
Newcastle County Police Department.
Okay, thank you. Please introduce yourself.
So Justice for Jerina. Justice for Jerina. The J. Lot of injustice in the city of Wilmington. Brandywine High School football game. The E, equality. We don't see equality. We see inequality every day in the city of Wilmington. And in the county. We were at the county council meeting last week, and will be at the next county council meeting on Tuesday. The R, representatives, representation. Reality that we don't always see, that we can't always connect to, that everybody that represents doesn't have an intimate connection with. Reality of having family in jail, being somebody in jail. When you have family that get locked up, you get locked up too. You have to deal with all sorts of inequalities and injustices over and over again, just to see your family, just to get them what it is that they need, just to get on the phone with them. Felony convictions that stay with you for your whole life. Inciting a riot? The officer who sat on her back incited a riot. The officer who injured her incited a riot. The officer hasn't been charged, his name hasn't been released. This isn't about me. I know that we celebrate respected people, people that are in positions of power, that represent well, that set good examples. As parents, you want to set the best example for your child. As council people, y'all should want to set the best example for the city. I don't know, but I'm probably not running in 2024. I might not be applying for Councilwoman Walsh's position. But I might be. But I know that it's not about me, it's about us. It's about assembly. That's the A. I just spelled Jerina. It's about assembly. When I was called on by the family, I called on Chandra Pitts to be at the school board meeting. It was her idea to be at the school board meeting for Brandywine. I called on Kobe Owens. His mom's right here. She's the one that got them to come back in. It wasn't me. They were ready to go. I know how important it is to get people to the table for justice for Jerina. We going to keep up the good fight for Jerina. For those tapes, all the body camera footage to be released, because we fought for those body cameras to be on those police officers. We fought so that we would have justice, so that we would have transparency, so that we would have accountability. That needs to be released. He needs to be prosecuted. He said it was not his problem, it is his problem. This officer that sat on her back, he will pay. And we thank y'all for giving us this opportunity. We thank you for giving us the ability to speak tonight. Loretta Walsh was somebody that was a staunch advocate for the police. We're a staunch advocate. We advocate for our community. We care about our community. We care about our safety. We care about the public interest that is our safe environment for our children especially. God bless y'all.
All right. The Federation of Morris Science Temple, let me come forward, please. Please introduce yourself. And please watch your step as you step to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President. All the city council representatives that present today. My name is Brother Jay Howard Bay. I'm the state representative for the Federation Morris Science Temple of America. I'll be very brief as I can. I want to thank also the Public Assets Network, WITN, for allowing us to speak tonight. Thank you. Also, you know, it's, couldn't been better, all these officials in one spot. Lieutenant Governors, you know, retired city council representatives, it's just great. Since 2014, we had a good relationship, speaking on the Morris Science Temple of America in this chamber, and we fostered a great, great opportunity to do great things until COVID hit us. And today, I'm just going to give us some updates as far as where we are as an organization and where we want to go with the help of the city of Wilmington. As I know that it's a lot of new faces here, it should be the same spirit as we've seen already repeated tonight. So same spirit that I hope to see and the same city council people who take these seats as other people have gone by, I hope that, you know, still runs, you know, really deep. You know, very briefly, January eighth is coming up upon us, January eighth through the fifteenth, been recognized by the city of Wilmington, and it's all for our founder, Nobu Ju Ali, who his sister is holding up. And really, you know, due to time, I'm just going to get to the point, it's a lot of things that the Morris Science Temple of America want to start, you know, doing for the city. And we're going to need the city's help. One in particular is that we have a situation where there's a bill that's been put forth in 2002, February eighth, about the reparations committee, task force. Morris Science Temple of America willing to open arms to help with that organization of that committee. And so in the coming weeks, I'll be coming to the office to some of you and contacting whoever your representations are or your secretaries to try to get that initiative back on board. I know as well as myself, speaking outside of Morris Science Temple of America, there's other organizations that have a common heart and a common unity for a community. On top of that, you know, we looking at what's going on across the nation. We see a lot of our people in California and the nation of doing with reparations, they're looking at the housing development. And so I'm asking for those council representatives who are in connection with the Wilmington Housing Bank or the Land Bank to also reach out to us in a hand press of unity so we can get three properties. One of those properties will be like Brother was giving a, a great opportunity to speak on tonight, but I don't have the time. The rehabilitation centers that we plan to put together. Also, you know, for the youth centers that we plan to put together, as well as the central hub where I'll be a religious organization for people to fellowship. Again, I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to speak. City of Wilmington, we just ask that you don't let us down. You know, we've been recognized through the state, we've been recognized through the city, but we're home, you know, we meet within the city limits. And so, a lot of what you call constituents are members of this organization. And we have a very, very deep love for the city, just like everyone here, I'm sure that's took an oath. And, and you know, again, I want to thank everybody for letting me speak, thank you for my sister for holding the profit up, Noble Dua Lee is his name, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Christina K., are you still with us via Zoom?
I am, thank you so much for an opportunity to speak tonight, City Council President. I did want to actually speak on the legislation that is on the agenda tonight. Couple pieces, I just wanted to share my support for Councilwoman Darby in her resolutions that are being presented tonight, I think that each and every one are very necessary things that need to happen in the city of Wilmington, and with the Wilmington Fire Department, to ensure that we've got a a fair and equitable process in place. So, I did just want to speak my support in regards to that legislation, I don't know if we're getting to it tonight, but I do hope that we are. In regards to Loretta Walsh, I was always taught, you know, if you don't have anything nice to say, don't say anything at all. But I do want to say that I am looking forward to city council meetings where I am not muted, or skipped over, because she disagreed with the things that I had to say. So, good riddance, and thank you again for an opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone who signed up on Zoom, or anyone else in council chambers for public comment? If not, we are going to move to legislative business. Councilmember Gray.
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Harley.
Yes, Mr. President, I have two resolutions to present tonight. My first resolution is Agenda Item 0235.
Resolution 22066, Agenda 0235, whereas in accordance with Section 2-104 of the city charter, city council shall employ such persons as may be necessary for the proper discharge of its business, and whereas council demand desirable to appoint the following person necessary for the proper discharge of its business, which shall serve at the pleasure of the city council. Now therefore be yet resolved by the council of the city of Wilmington, that the following person is hereby appointed as an employee of city council, and shall be placed on the payroll of the city of Wilmington in the office of city clerk, Mona A. Parrick, Chief of Staff.
Council President, I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a ye and a vote.
It's been properly moved and seconded, that this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a ye and a vote on the question.
Yes, Mr. President, this resolution appoints Mona A. Parrick as the Chief of Staff for the 108th session of the council of the city of Wilmington. And I just want to say that I meant to say, I am presenting this resolution on your behalf.
Okay, thank you. Any councilmembers have any comment, if not, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver? Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson? Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Eleven yays and one absent.
Declared adopted, also Councilmember Oliver did ask to be excused.
Is she excused for the rest of the evening?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present on your behalf, Agenda Item Number 0236.
Resolution 22067, Agenda 0236, whereas in accordance with Section 2-104 of the city charter, city council shall employ such persons as may be necessary for proper discharge of its business, and whereas council demand desirable to appoint the following person necessary for the proper discharge of its business, which shall serve at the pleasure of city council. Now therefore be yet resolved by the council of the city of Wilmington, that the following person is hereby appointed as an employee of city council, and shall be placed on the payroll of the city of Wilmington in the office of city clerk, Anissa Bryant, Legislative Assistant Assistant.
Mr. President, I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a ye and a vote.
So move. Second.
It's been properly moving seconded, this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a ye and a vote on the question.
Yes, Mr. President, this resolution appoints Anissa Bryant as the Legislative Administrative Assistant Position for the 108th session of the council of the city of Wilmington.
Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Eleven yays and one absent.
Declared adopted.
Yes, Mr. President, may I be excused?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution to present on your behalf.
Resolution 22068, Agenda 0237, whereas Councilmember Loretta Walsh submitted a letter to Council President Ernest Trippi Congo to second, resigning her position as a council member.
I move that this resolution be received, recorded, and filed, and adopted by a ye and a vote.
Councilmember Johnson, WITN requests that you please speak into the mic.
Oh, I, it's far, okay. I move that this resolution be received, recorded, and filed, and adopted by a ye and a vote.
Second.
It's been properly moving seconded, this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a ye and a vote on the question.
This, Mr. President, this resolution is being presented for council's review. It accepts the formal resignation of Councilmember Loretta Walsh, and formally certifies that a vacancy exists in the at-large council position, which shall be filled by appointment of a duly qualified successor in accordance with city charter, Section 2-101 in city code, Section 2-34.
Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilman, Councilwoman Fields? Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Nine yays and three absent.
Declared adopted, Councilmember Fields also asked to be excused for the rest of the meeting.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Darby?
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present. Just one moment. Thank you. Resolution 22069, Agenda 0238. Whereas Wilmington's Charter 1101 grants the city broad powers of local self-government under rule, home rule authority, which includes the authority to enforce its legislation by the imposition of fines, forfeiture, penalties, and imprisonment. And whereas Wilmington, Chapter 1-102. I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed, and adopted by a ye and a vote.
Second.
It's been properly moving seconded, this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a ye and a vote on the question.
Yes, so this is a long time coming, we started working on this piece of legislation, Councilmember Harley and Councilmember Cabrera and I, when our Chief of Staff was Daniel Walker. So, it feels good to be at this point, and I know a lot of conversation has been happening, has been happening lately around fees and fines reform in our city, and we just had a big announcement by our administration to have a lot of fees and fines reform around parking, and our residential parking process. So, I'm excited for that. This Fees and Fines Task Force is to look at all fees and fines, not just parking, but all fees and fines throughout the city of Wilmington, with a collaborative approach with council, with the community, and hopefully with some collaboration with the administration. So, that is the sole purpose of the Fees and Fines Task Force. The, it would come, it would be 11 members on the task force, we're looking to have some of the leading community organizations who's been in on this conversation, which would be AAA, Delaware Center for Justice, the NAACP, Latin Community Center. So, all of these organizations have been pushing for reform, and they had a big win last week with getting the mayor administration to make those reforms, so this is just a continuation of the work, and for us to hold those announcements for reform, the accountability piece, to making sure they're implemented, and then also to come up with new fees and fines reform for the city of Wilmington.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, and I think this is a great piece of legislation. As Councilwoman Darby said, the administration briefed us on the changes that they have made with parking and towing, fines and fees. And they've come up with some really creative ideas that will prevent residents from even acquiring tickets, and also possibly reducing some of the monetary amount of the fines and fees. So, that just shows me what a dedicated group can do. So, this task force would be phenomenal to address the other departments in the city, like license and inspections, and the water department, and look at those fines and fees, so I really think this would be a great thing for the city, and that more citizens would think it's progressive, and they would be more satisfied with the outcomes, especially dealing with parking, thank you.
Councilmember McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to state that I did attend the first meeting, and I was very pleased by the engagement that we had. But I was actually under the impression that we were only just looking at fees and fines, then it came to parking and also water. I do realize that it is still a need for this component, because compliance is also a very large part of what's going on with parking, and they did have some ideas, so I will be supporting this piece of legislation, it's just that it seems like it's implied, like it's looking at everything, but more so, it's actually just two different departments.
Council, Councilman Spadola?
Thank you, Council President, so I've kicked this around a lot, you know, in my thoughts. And you know, my, what I view it as now is essentially an outside agency coming in, even putting money to assist with their research into Wilmington's fines and fee structure. And I don't really see any cost or risk to the, to the city associated with it. My original concern that I brought up with the sponsor was, you know, essentially it'd be going on a wild goose chase, in the sense that they'd be looking at reforming fines and fees without the context of the city budget. And she made some, a slight amendment for that, she did not make the finance chair the chair. But then watching the presentation last night, you know, they did specifically mention how they, they, they look for the fiscal impact. So, that went a long way towards assuaging my concerns about, you know, making sure we're looking at fines and fees holistically. Because even with the, you know, the news release about the parking ticket fine coming down, a lot of people are saying, well, how are you going to make up for that fine and fee? How are you going to make up for that, that $15 from each ticket? So, you know, so I am inclined to support it, I just, you know, two closing comments on it. One, we don't necessarily need a task force for everything, when we see a problem, whether it's you know, legislatively, or something that needs to be fixed, we can just go ahead and propose legislation like, like I am with some parking issues that I've been intimately involved with, so I hope this doesn't delay anything. And, and really, just in closing, I really urge the, the people, the council members on this, to really just try to work in good faith with the administration, you know, you just catch a lot more flies with honey than you do with vinegar. And my conversations with the administration about the parking issues that people have brought to me, many have been tense, some have been angry conversations. But, you know, everyone in, everyone on the ninth floor in the mayor's office, they are well-meaning, good people that, you know, want to do the best they can for the city, so if you, you know, work in good faith with them, you'll be able to accomplish a lot more for the city than if, than if you play a game of gotcha, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cabrera?
Thank you, Mr. President, I did want to add that the presentation last night at the Community Development and Urban Planning Meeting was an excellent presentation, it gave us, you know, a more thorough look at what, how they will assist and provide their supports, and as Councilman Spadola said, to also look at the fiscal impact. One of the points that I made was that where we are now with these situations, they were a long time coming, it's been many, many administrations, when, you know, the parking tickets started to go up, the more aggressive enforcement. And it is good to have a separate pair of eyes to look at this, so, which is one, one of the reasons why I am a co-sponsor of this, in working with Councilmember Darby. I do want to add that this is great, but at the same time, we have been working on different parts of the parking enforcement throughout the years. Mr. Grant, I remember when he did a video that he, and it was meant to mock the signs about having signs that people are putting money in the meters on Saturday, when we know that we don't enforce on Saturdays. And even though I was pushing for the parking fines to go down to $25 in my first go-around on council, my first term, that wasn't able to be done because of the fiscal impact, at least we introduced the statute of limitations. And I was very happy to see when the administration did come forth and say, listen, it is broken, admitting that they are overwhelmed with the fines, they're not able to handle it, I don't know why the city of Wilmington put it back in their pocket to do the, the appeals. Well, they said because the, the judges were letting everybody go, and they looked at this as a way to make money. So, now, this administration is looking at sending it back to the court system. So, again, I agree that if we work collaboratively, collaboratively with the administration, the work that they have done in looking and restructuring the fines and fees, that we can get a lot accomplished. So, I am in support of this, I will be working closely with Councilmember Darby. And I welcome, I welcome input from the community, input from my colleagues. And I hope that we can compromise on the things that we can change, and move forward, and make this a more user-friendly city. I really do believe that the income will come in from more people coming to our city, and seeing us as a user-friendly city, instead of worrying about boots and towing and parking fines. So, I do thank Councilmember Darby for bringing the group forward, and the support that they're going to give us working collaboratively. And, Mr. President, I'm dying here, as you know, I'm sick, so I will be asked to be excused after the vote on this piece. I wanted to stay on long enough to vote for this.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Gray?
I just have one question about the legislation, it says that they are to meet on February, in February, just once a year?
Councilmember Darby, you can answer that when we come to you for final comment. What was your question again, Councilmember Gray?
I think it says in the, in the resolution that the task force is to meet every February.
Okay. And I'm definitely in support of this, glad to be a co-sponsor. I think this is one of those pieces that when we look back as a council, what we did for our city, we, we will be proud to be a part of this movement towards just doing better by our constituents. Thank you so much, Councilman, Councilwoman Darby, for the team that you have been a part of, in making this a reality, and bringing this to the, to the forefront. It's just, you haven't just grabbed, you know, reached in the sky, you, you are, and that, and that team, they are, they are pretty awesome, as far as collecting the data, doing the research, and like I said, just not grabbing, grabbing in the sky. And it's not all about a gotcha moment, it's about just doing better for, for our community. I love that you invited the administration to, to be a part of it.
Yes.
So, it definitely is not trying to be divisive at all. So, again, I, I thank you, and I thank the team, and I'm glad to be a part of it. Councilmember Johnson?
I would like to be added as a co-sponsor, I indeed, when this was presented to me first as the Finance Chair, you know, I had, I had a lot of questions kind of about what the goal would be, but through finding out more information, it made it clear that this can work in conjunction with the work that's already being done. And so, you know, number one, we have to continue to double down on making this a livable city for all, you know, no matter what income level you are. So, I think this is an important task force, and again, looking at not just the parking, but L and I, and other departments, how we can make a fair scheme, so. So, um, I'm glad to be a part of this and as the finance chair, I look forward to being part of the task force and making sure we um make, make it a more just city. So thank you very much, councilmember Darby.
Thank you. And council, um, member Darby, any final comment?
Yes, um, so this legislation um is for, is bringing all the working parts together. Cause I feel like a lot of council people care about this issue and like one person was doing this, another person was doing that. So this is about coming together and just like um council president, um, Congo was saying, from the very beginning, I have been collaborative and communicating with the administration. So it was never I got you moment. It was always open. I had several meetings with them where a lot of our staff sat in on trying to have these collaborative conversations. Um, I've been in plenty of meetings with councilmember Harley, a councilmember Cabrera around this issue. And I have um sent out emails, like everyone know when I was applying to the program. Um, and I thought might, might clear up um councilmember um McCoy's um, um, her thoughts, um, cause the program is different than the task force. So the program is focusing on parking and water issue, water billing. So that's just temporary. They'll be with us for a year, right? This task force is permanent. Well, as long as we keep it here, right? It will be a more of a longevity thing for us to continue to look at our fees and fines throughout the city of Wilmington. So it's two separate things, but it will work together. Um, and I think that having the program will help us offset and get the task force started. So that when they leave us, we have something that keeps going. Cause a lot of times we have programs come and then when they leave, it's just done, right? I want the project to keep going and for us to keep having conversations around fees and fines. So this is a collaborative effort. It was never I got you moment. Administration has always been aware of the task force of the program that was going on. And all of my council colleagues, I try to keep you guys updated through the emails when I was applying. Um, I got a lot of letters from almost the majority of city council to support me in that application. So I want to thank my council colleague and just go up for a vote.
Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
No.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Eight yays, one nay, and three absent.
Declare adopted.
May I be excused, Mr. President?
Yes, may be excused.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution twenty-two zero seventy, agenda zero-two-three-nine, whereas Wilmington City Council hereby supports debt forgiveness for loans provided through the U.S. Department of Education.
I move this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that this resolution be received, recorded, adopted by yea and nay vote on the question.
Yeah, so um this legisla- resolution is pretty straightforward. Um, so um I was reached out to by a, a, an organization who's looking to um have student loan um debt forgiveness. Um, but in the process, our um president did announce that they would be doing the ten thousand, twenty thousand dollar um loan forgiveness. So um in support of that, but also taking it a step further and joining um the movement throughout the country of other cities who are putting pressure on the federal government um to address student loans, um, the debt. Um, so pretty much that's it for this legislation. It's just saying, hey, um, we are in support of debt forgiveness. And on a federal level, we need you guys to take more action. Um, the twenty thousand dollars is great, but we need more relief. It has a lot of impact on um the millennials, um, and people of color, um, low-income people. Um, so really just um taking this issue serious and just joining the conversation that's happening across the country where a lot of cities are doing resolutions to the federal government. Thank you.
Councilman Spadola.
Just respectfully, I think half of the stuff we ask the state to do is a waste of time for us to talk about. And so far, a hundred percent of the stuff we ask our federal delegation to do uh is a waste of time if we're not talking about something Wilmington-specific. Um, so I won't be supporting this. I mean, it's just, it's a waste of city resources to have a staff member even type this up. Thank you.
Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray? Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
No.
Councilman Mills?
No.
Councilman Spadola?
No.
President Congo?
Yes.
Four yays, three nays, and five absent.
Declare adopted.
Um, uh, Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution twenty-two zero seventy-one, agenda zero-two-four-zero, whereas firefighters are among the oldest and most critical occupations and municipality needs to maintain functionality.
I move this resolution to be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question?
Yes, um, so the few people I had to speak towards, there's some firefighters who wanted to contribute. I didn't realize the meeting was gonna be so long. So I'm actually gonna hold my next two pieces of legislation.
Okay.
To have this convo.
Including this one, I'm sorry.
Yes, both of them.
Councilmember McCoy?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution to present. This is agenda item zero-two-four-two.
Resolution twenty-two zero seventy-two, agenda zero-two-four-two, whereas pursuant to section two-three-six-three of the city code, the council deemed necessary and proper to specify the requirements for review.
I move, I move that this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea-nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea-nay vote on the question?
Um, this, this resolution is a House debate resolution. Um, it's for the uh Parks Department to accept a uh grant uh for Judy Johnson Park. Um, there is, over the course of the past few years, we've been working with the state to make some serious investments uh in that park and in recognition of one of our all-time heroes, Judy Johnson. Um, so we're trying to uh put the work in so that the field is up to the standards of, of, of Judy Johnson.
Councilmember McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Councilmember Mills.
Yes, Mr. President. I too would like to be co-sponsor, please.
And clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray, is she gone for the evening being excused as well, Mr. President?
I'm not sure. I haven't heard from her.
Okay. Uh, councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Seven yays and five absent.
Declare adopted.
Mr. President, I have another uh item to present.
Resolution twenty-two zero seventy-three, agenda zero-two-four-three, whereas community violence remains a persistent public safety concern.
I move for this resolution to be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea-nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea-nay vote on the question?
This is a resolution um formally adopting the report um titled, The Landscape Analysis Report for the City of Wilmington. This is a report um that was authored by the uh Community-Based Public Safety Collective, uh, which is the group from Newark, New Jersey. Um, for folks who have been paying attention, uh, we engaged, um, and many of us even traveled there uh last year to look at their public safety strategies, um, and to uh ask for their help in terms of it recommending what works. And Newark, even during um the pandemic, is one of the few cities um that actually has reduced crime. Um, so they're doing something right and they've been doing something right for, you know, the past five to seven years. So, um, we're just trying to uh implement their strategies. A lot of them, as the action steps are, um, we're taking a heart right now and, and working with the administration and uh we will be updating the public soon about the first public announcements of um, you know, um, I guess steps towards their goals. Namely, you know, um, setting up an action plan, funding uh organizations, also doing a violence coordinator uh for, for the city. So we have a lot to look forward to and uh we, we really are excited about this opportunity.
Councilmember McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor of this piece as well.
Councilmember Mills.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to be added as a co-sponsor and that the work that um, that doing up in, in Newark is, is very impressive. There's a lot of work being done in, in, in cities all across the country. I mean, Newark, New Jer- Newark, New Jersey was one. Trenton, New Jersey had zero murders over the summer, you know, that, that, those are the type of things that, that I would love to see happen here in our city. So I hope we can continue this effort of work and this piece is a, a step in the right direction. So, thank you.
Councilmember Darby.
Yes, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. I think this is a great um step, foundation to us. One day having an office of violence prevention, when I think of public safety, um, for our city, I think of reforms for our police department. I think of reform uh for our fire department and I think of our office of violence prevention. Um, and I think this is a great foundation to us getting to that point of being able to establish that. Thank you.
Any further comments, councilman Johnson?
Uh, no, I just appreciate everyone, um, all, all of us on council, uh, all of us have been working very hard at this. And, and this is something where we took it to the administration and said, you know, this needs to be done. And I commend council president, uh, councilwoman McCoy and councilmember Oliver for putting the screws to this and making sure it gets happened and the programs get funded. Um, that's the other key. So we have a lot of excitement to look forward to. Thank you.
Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Gray's off the floor. Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
And President Congo?
Yes.
Seven yays and five absent.
Declare adopted. Councilmember Mills?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Councilmember Spadola?
Nothing tonight, may I be excused?
We won't have a corner if you, if you're excused. Uh, councilmember Darby, any petitions and communication?
Um, yeah, I have a few. So um, I know uh we had a public comment here about Gerina. I'm hoping that um even as council people, um, I think it's important to advocate for things on other, in the school board. If that's um city coun- um county council or if that's the general assembly. I think it is in our power to be advocates and to um ask for certain things to happen, especially if it's affecting our constituents. Um, so I just want to say that I um, I heard them and I am listening. Um, and hope that um as we go into our general assembly, our, our council will put pressure for Leo Board reforms, pressure on um more transparency and accountability, accountability for um policing throughout the whole state. It's not just the issue here um in the city of Wilmington. And I was trying to find my notes. Um, of some other things that I wanted to talk about, but I cannot find it in here. Um, yeah, and um also, yeah, I have made a note about the Moore Science Temple of America. Wanted to connect with them and I think we should start giving um our constituents updates on our reparations task force. I know that we were starting to appoint people, but I know that is something that is in the process of um happening now. Thank you.
Thank you, council, councilmember Fields. I'm sorry, McCoy.
I thank you, Mr. President. Um, I don't have very many of announcements. I just wanted to um basically thank Saint Helwix uh and their parishioner for coming out to exceed, uh, to receive their resolution. Um, the Polish community has, that church actually has been a pillar to the neighborhood for quite some time. And just want to make certain they realize that we do remember them and we are, and we're honoring their, whatever their, when it comes to their celebration, their festivities that we want, we can't wait to see them uh start back up again now that we seem to be finally trailing out of COVID. Uh, the other thing I would like to do is I would like to congratulate uh the three school boards, you know, that the women's learning is collaborative. Uh, and their efforts to try to get the three school boards to really come together and think that this is gonna be a, a, a better idea to deal with the schools here within the city of Wilmington. So I just would like to say congratulations. I know that was a, a heavy lift to try to get three different boards. I kind of see the um, you know, the importance of doing this and working together. So just want to say congratulations. That's Brandywine, Red Clay, and Christina.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson.
Uh, yes, I would like to, of course, uh commend Squeeze Box Records on their fifth anniversary party. Uh, it was, it was a good time uh last Saturday. So again, uh, congratulations on five years and, and look forward to many more. Um, there is a Halloween event next Thursday at the Tot Lot, I believe it's five-thirty to seven-thirty. Um, hosted by Westside Groves and other community partners. Again, this is gonna be the new um Pastor Lottie um Park. But um, and, and that announcement will be coming soon as to when that date will be. But uh, this is the um Tot Lot at Fortin Rodney. Um, and there is also on um Bancroft Parkway, uh Union Park Gardens, Neighborhood Association's hosting the annual Halloween parade and movie night. Uh, so please uh come out to that. It's, it's uh Saturday. I believe it's um from six to eight. So again, um, a lot of exciting events, especially around Halloween. So uh for those who are out there, make sure again to stay safe, um, start as early as possible. Um, and uh we, we look forward to seeing some cheer, more, uh, more and more cheer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Field.
Um, I will just be brief and again, congratulations to Loretta Walsh and her retirement and everybody have a good night.
Thank you, councilman Spadola.
Uh, nothing tonight, council president.
Thank you. I just want to remind uh councilmembers that tomorrow we are having a meet and greet. Oh, I'm sorry, man.
No problem.
That's two times straight, council, councilman Mills.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. I just wanted to uh also echo congratulations to councilwoman Walsh on her retirement. And say congratulations uh to the city on, on a job well done for the South Bridge Wetlands Park. For that, the millions and millions of hours that's been invested, million miles of dollars that's been invested into helping improve the quality of life for the South Bridge residents to relieve that flooding that has been plaguing at that neighborhood for, for decades. So thank you to Wilmington for that and keep up the great work and, and, and let's work more together just to solve our constituents' problems. That the, you know, even if it takes a long time, it, it can be done. We're not gonna fix this violence problem overnight, but we put the work in and it can be done. Let's do the same thing and thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Spadola.
Thank you, council president. I just want to congratulate WITN employee on the birth of his daughter, Nigel on the birth of his daughter.
Okay, yes, thank you. Again, we're gonna have a uh meet and greet for our new chief of staff uh upstairs in the um James Baker Conference Room from twelve to two-thirty tomorrow. So um councilmembers, please come in and um get an opportunity to meet Mona. Again, that's gonna be from twelve to two-thirty. At this time, I'm gonna ask for two letters to be read into the record uh by our city clerk.
Yes, the first one's from Ms. Carol Doolan. It says, uh, councilwoman Loretta Walsh's decades of leadership on Wilmington City Council have crafted a rich legacy for all of us who reside here. She was a female pioneer on city council in the Newcastle County Sheriff's Office, in Wilmington Democratic Politics, and in numerous nonprofit. She is a noted longtime champion of Wilmington seniors. Loretta has researched and tackled city issues with courage and skill. Perhaps most significantly, she is a loyal friend whose homes always have been open to many, including me. Respectfully, Carol Doolan. The second one is from Brian McLynchee. Um, councilmembers, elected officials, special guests, friends, and family of Loretta Walsh, city residents, and members of the public. Loretta Walsh has been a Wilmington institution and recognizable name in our city of Wilmington for decades. From the time Tom Maloney, our mutual friend, won election as mayor, to the moment our other mutual friend, Joe Biden, was sworn in to be the forty-sixth president.
to the moment our other mutual friend, Joe Biden, was sworn in to be the 46th President of the United States of America. Loretta has been there, and she has been there for all of us. Communities of color, seniors, women, first responders, veterans, rank-and-file union members, the entire city, the whole of it. At a time when division often rhymes supreme, she served at large in a large way. In fact, larger than life itself. Her big personality matched her brand of personal politics, and you never doubted where she stood or who she represented and why. You may not agree with Loretta's opinion, but you know well to respect her. She demanded and deserved it. Her service to the city on council in many ways is unparalleled. Her vigor on equal and virtually every cause which is now deemed progressive, she championed decades before it became in vogue. Pushing for public accessibility for the disabled, lending a leading voice for women's health and equal rights, demanding workplace fairness and end to discrimination in hiring, advocating for good jobs for city residents, fighting for her seniors, leveraging political capital to support city departments and community programs. She did it all with unburrowed passion and political smarts, and sometimes with a hard fist, but mostly, mostly with her Irish charm, big heart, and a smile. I have been involved in public policy for 30 years. I have known every mayor during my lifetime and worked with more than a few. And I have never met any elected official more dedicated to their city at the local level than Loretta. Some may as much, but certainly nobody more. Finally, even more than her knowledge of the city charter, the departments, and personnel, Wilmington government will miss her, simply say, "Loretta" in the Louis L. Redden Building, and literally, everyone knows who you mean. She treated city workers like her personal friends. Loretta knew names and their families. Loretta, thank you for your service, your dedication, friendship, and support. Tonight, we celebrate you, and while I'm certain this is very difficult, you can take some small comfort knowing you have made a mark on thousands and thousands and thousands of residents. After all, all of us should be so lucky. Your friend, Brian McLinchey, Honorary Counsel to Ireland."
Okay, thank you. And just before we adjourn, I just made mention that we, council does have a new Chief of Staff. So I want to publicly thank Michelle Bassanite for the job that she has done for us on council since February. You have done an outstanding job, Michelle. So you deserve kudos from everyone on council, from all of the staff. I really appreciate you just for keeping me, for trying to keep me at least, you know, on a straight path, just constantly reminding me of different meetings and just everything that you have done since December. I really love you for that. Thank you so much. And with that, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone.